Number one, was there body?
Doing well, Mayor.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Good. This time we can all stand for our invitation of Mr. Mitchell, followed by the blessing of the angels.
Let's pray. Have a couple good things for me blessings in our lives, Lord, and opportunity to serve you, Lord. For we pray that we minister to your people in a way that will glorify you, Lord, and that all things will be done for your glory. Or be with each and everyone here tonight, each family representing Christ's presence and holiness. We pray. Amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're now down to business on the, it's not on the agenda. And if you move, we need to add a mitigation plan, hazard mitigation plan resolution that we're required to have in working with the color plateau planning district, somehow since related FEMA, I guess, is that correct? So, if you add that under new business, please. Hey, Scott.
Yes.
Do you want to handle the Davis Brothers proposal down there in your report? It's at your desk, you see it there?
Yes, Mayor, can we just do that under committee reports for downtown revitalization?
Yeah, let me think. What did you add, Martin?
The town manager's report discussion for sidewalk, fire truck, he misses your picture.
Need to add to, get your town manager's report. Need to add sidewalks, fire truck, and insurance. Okay? Anything else to add to the agenda or report? We're here in terms of our motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same side. We have received our minutes from the January rate of council meeting in our agenda packet. Hope everyone had a chance to review those. If there's no editing, editing needed, is our motion to approve the minutes from the January rate of council meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same side. We're now down to approval, council table, capital asset. Mr. Mitchell, again, any new bills or anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Geller?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the January council valuables presented.
Motion to approve council valuables, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same side. Okay. This time I will declare some public hearings to receive input on the new park near the farmer's market and government center. We have Nathan and Emma here with us tonight. We met with them last Monday, and we have given due notice for input. So, I don't see a whole lot of people here for input, which kind of turns it back over to us. I'll start with some thoughts.
Okay.
This is just me. Uh, based on our meeting last week, with the renovation of this plan and some of the limitations that you already told us, I'm hoping in my brain, I'm hoping we can do the lift or the overlook, some kind of wall control. I'd love to be able to have at least an eight-hole frisbee golf that's just something launched.
Sure.
And the dog park, that's four of those. After our discussions, I'm not sure, I mean, that's just me, I'm sure the council has comments. I'm not real sure about now the viability due to cost, et cetera, of the amphitheater. That's just me, sure. So that's my input.
Okay.
Nathan.
I think-
So I'll turn it over to the council.
Okay.
Or you need to present some stuff at this point in time.
We should probably give you a little bit of an update on what we've come up with since the last time we talked. And I think what you just described is a fantastic phase one to where we have the overlook and the trails and the dog park, and then perhaps the amphitheater, as we're going to talk about here in a minute, the picnic grove down here on the, on the south side, those could potentially be a phase two or phase three piece, but you know, have them in the master plan and let them dream a little bit, won't hurt anybody.
Sure.
Emma, do you want to talk about the frisbee golf?
Yeah, sure.
I'll let you be the bearer of that news.
Oh, he, he, get, I'm getting a spoiler.
So you run extra ten minutes on you go to the frisbee.
I love that idea of the frisbee golf, and I've heard people say they want it, and I think it being right there next to the corporate centers, it'd be a hit for people's lunchtimes. But I called my friend who is a, he is a disc golf park designer this week to get an opinion, to show the layout that we had here, and just say, what do you think in general, what's an idea for it? And his, his comments were, you need thirty to forty acres for a full-sized disc golf course, that's eighteen holes. So he just thought even the nine-hole disc golf area was going to be too small here on a site that is this challenging, because a couple of points of it is, first of all, you need two hundred fifty feet approximately between like the station and the tee pad and then the back seat.
Okay.
That can change based on your terrain, and here, you know, you can make it shorter because we have trees and hills. But he said every location that we'd be able to strategically put it, it'd be crossing the pathway, and you have potential to hit someone in the head as they're walking by if someone's playing at the same time, someone's using the path.
Probably anybody hitting heads, I would not think.
We don't want that. So he just, he went over on how he didn't think that the site was big enough. There's still ways we can look at it, but with that, with that feedback from him, and that's what he does professionally, it's sort of like, oh.
Don't have enough land, basically.
Right.
Okay. Then answers that question.
There is a comparable nine-hole golf couple, I looked at a couple different ones that have been established lately, nine-hole courses, and they're anywhere between fifteen and thirty-acre parks. So that's, yeah.
Very good. Okay.
So that, that takes one programmatic thing off the board, and I think, you know, we would all agree that it would be wonderful to have that out there, but at the same time, I think we're not going to lose a whole lot of interest in the park by not having that.
Oh, I agree.
Because the walking trails and, you know, just the nature aspect of the stormwater basins there, that, that's really going to be a nice draw. Of course, we've got the precedent board down here that shows, you know, the overlook, kind of what we're thinking about, the elevated boardwalk, of course, there's the amphitheater, just in case somebody wants to get there one day, and then-
Sorry, Nathan.
Ruined the corner, Thomas. The bridges, and then the veterans' park over at admin has a really neat pavilion, big name shelter structure that has a, like a stone fireplace in between, and we thought those would be nice down the south side there.
Stone over there. You know, those are the only that have to be.
Got four more.
In the middle, but I have no more.
I'll say you're the leader, yes.
So those are just some of the ideas of, of what could be out there, what it might look like, it doesn't have to exactly be those particular instances, but kind of give you an idea of what we're thinking about, what would be a good place for the town left. But overall, I think, like you said, Mr. Doty, you know, if we could do the overlook and some paths and dog park, that would be a tremendous phase one. And of course, that cuts, you know, as we were talking about the last time, that'll cut a good portion of the cost out, because that amphitheater's a, that's a pricey piece.
It is. And we're not, you know, I think we already agreed we didn't want to pay, is that right, Doyle?
Yeah.
We didn't want to pay.
Did not pay the pathway, so that would have been-
That would cost.
Right. So all in all, I think it's, like we said the last time, it's a tremendous piece of property, it has excellent connections, obviously, to the corporate side there of CGI and Northirk. We've shown just in concept, a connection up the north end up to Garden Side, and then down at the south end over to where the farmer's market piece is there, and the veterans' building, that can all tie into the government center there on the south side, and be easy to come through.
Emma, where's the dog park?
I left it very vague.
That's fair.
We, we got so focused in on what the circle was the last time, so I just left it on there as dog park. And I think, Miss Stanley, you said somewhere about two to three acres?
Yeah.
If, if you take the green, all the green there is three point seven acres.
Okay.
So, I mean, it could be just one sort of large fluid dog park technically there. And then if we ever do the other uses, they can come in, and it won't be an hindrance to them at all to, to put those on top of what's already there.
If we wanted to expand on that dog park, Nathan, would we have to do earthwork, or could we leave it like the terrain it is, or would it be a combination of both, doing a little, if we wanted to expand on the square footage of the dog park, now that we're not going to have frisbee golf in that area, I mean, is that a possibility?
I mean, you might, yeah, you might be able to slide a little bit down the stormwater buffer up here, Scott, where the detention base it is, we might be able to gain a little bit along that, along that side, but we want to fence that, obviously, so no dogs are going down in there and-
Got you.
And if we fence, if we fence in that three, let's say three and a half acres, if we fence that in, that'll leave enough area on the outside of it for, if there were, to put the walking trail.
Oh, certainly. Yes, ma'am, certainly, yeah, we can, we can inscribe a dog park with the walking trails and-
Okay.
You know, then that, that sort of begins to beg a, a sort of a different aspect that we haven't talked about is what the fence look like, and I don't think we want necessarily, I would recommend not going out there with chain link or anything like that, I think what we want to do is maybe a four-board fence with a woven wire behind it to keep the dogs in, but that it looks nice, it looks, yeah, it's got a farm feel to it versus being a, you know, a- Chain link.
Chain link.
He's scared to hang on. So that, though, that would be another cost that we haven't really talked about, you know, the cost of fence, but we, that can all be wrapped into dog park fitting and that line.
I missed, maybe I missed on the other, do you have, is, is that one of the renderings of the overlook? Which one's the overlook?
That one there, it's just an idea to have, you know, the stone wall and then the railing there to where folks can see through, of course, we talked about the view out there.
Yeah.
Just to structure that in a way that there's an only issue between parking and pedestrian, but at the same time make it look very nice.
Okay.
And Nathan, on the other side, where we won't be doing a frisbee golf course kind on the other set, side of the park area, would you just suggest maybe still clearing that out and doing some plantings, trees, or what would you suggest for that area?
I think-
Would you run a pack, would you run an additional trail like down?
You talking about the south side or the north side?
I'm talking about the south side.
Okay.
No, I'm talking about the north side, sorry.
The other south side.
The other south side, yeah, yeah. I think the way to answer that is to, if this thing gets traction and we get some money and it goes forward, is to go out there and just flag the trees, because it's been growing sort of in a succession state since it's been built, so there's some nice trees there. It may be that we, you know, at path intersections or something like that, we might do some dogwoods or crepe myrtles or something to, to give some interest along with some seating, but I wouldn't go into a really in-depth planting plan at this point. I'd, I'd let it, let's clear it, mow it, keep some of the nice trees, and then sort of see where we can go from there. But I, I wouldn't want to put a lot of money into some real formal landscaping.
And those bridges, are they pedestrian bridges or are they vehicle bridges?
Good question.
So it could be either way, it doesn't matter for, for application process, I mean, what?
I think, it won't matter for the application process, I think if you're going to spend the money to do it, you ought, you ought to at least make the circuit to where you can drive a pickup truck around it. So that would be probably three or four vehicle bridges.
Do it, let me just make one comment.
Help with the input.
Do environmental reviews, I think the environmental, that, that process will be different if you use a motorized vehicle instead of-
I see, okay.
Because we're, you're getting ready to go through that, and the reason I say that is we're getting ready to go through that with Hayside's little elevated trail behind the town Hayside, they've decided that they want theirs to accommodate motorized vehicles. So in order to do that, I'm going to have to do that entire environmental review all over, because now it's going to have ATVs or whatever they want, it's, it's a different process, so there may be more to do, but we're, we haven't even done the environmental yet, that would be what you'd want to know upfront, do you want motorized vehicles on it, or do you not?
Right.
Well, if we, if we delay taking out the amphitheater, yeah, sure, is, is really any need to have it to be wide enough for, is really, really, do we have a real need to have motorized vehicles in that?
You would want to have at least some, a range, like some for a gator, so you can pick up trash and, you know.
Electric golf cart.
Yeah, something like that, so you can-
So we still have to do it wide enough?
Um, possibly not. I mean, that's, that's a maintenance issue, so, I mean, plus it's going to be your property, so that, that makes a big difference too, so, but the thing is, you got to remember when, if you use grant dollars, all that needless stuff kicks in, because you have to follow this guy.
Yeah.
So that, that's the difference, but, you know, golf cart or, you know, a gators that you need for maintenance, I think, I think that'd be fine.
The reason I ask is for budget reasons more than-
Well, obviously, yeah, I mean, what we're showing here, you've got four bridges.
And what Emma says, you can still have access points to where you, to where you access half the park from one side and access where you access the other side of the park, um, on the other side of the watershed there.
Just asking, if we decide to do pedestrian, it's always be pedestrian, and then let's say ten to fifteen years down the road, we see that it's going to be viable for the amphitheater, would it be possible then at that point to go and switch those pathways, I mean, that's, what is the added cost? Do you, just making a prediction?
You're, you're just, you're going to have to replace probably three to four bridges.
How can you use green pipe, Pevens?
Because-
What do you say?
The way this is draining down through there, having a clear span is going to be the best for the stormwater, because just like in a drainpipe, if, if a bunch of trash and stuff gets stuck upstream in a, in a culvert pipe, then it starts backing up and causing all kinds of problems. So that being already established stormwater, we would want to set the pilings for those bridges outside of the, the flow channel that's already been established, and have as clear a span as we possibly can where there's no impeding of the flow of water.
They two-foot and high wide or something, true?
I'd say some of those things out there are probably six to ten-foot wide.
Down in there, they're-
The channels, yeah, yeah.
Especially with rain like we had.
Right. I mean, it makes sense, and, and it would be cheaper, absolutely, but I think for, not only for the stormwater flow and function that's already there that we cannot impede, but also for some aesthetics, those bridges will be a real draw to that park.
Sure. You're talking about like walking bridges. On the other side, Scott's question about planning, let me go to the other one.
Okay.
Listen, honestly, we need to get our, I'm thinking some kind of rubbing out that in there.
Yeah.
Who, who would mark, can some, I mean, would we need the, the area marked that needs rubbed, so we want to go in there and take out plants and trees that shouldn't be?
Yeah, sure.
Is that something you all can do?
That's something we do.
Can mark it and make sure we, because I know, if we go in there and tear it out,
Yeah.
if we don't have some brakes or whatnot to take out, I, I can see us taking out whatever is in our way.
Yeah.
You know what kind of-
Absolutely. You know, there's a lot of, sorry, sorry.
Something like the root of red buds on Red Bud Highway?
Yeah, yeah. You know, there's a lot of little saplings and, and undergrowth like that that just needs to be cleared out just to give a, a good presentation.
Okay.
You know, some of the larger trees, obviously, is what we want to keep, but then, in terms of laying out, you know, the pathway and, and that kind of thing, that's pretty easy to do, and, and sort of establishing that stormwater buffer, you know, we can do that on site with, with survey tape or something like that, so, yeah, just a little bit of boots on the ground.
You know what's coming next, or something.
I've got a good idea, but I'd like to go ahead and say, look.
So take, for right now, take theater, the amphitheater out.
Yeah.
Take vehicle bridges out, take frisbee golf out, and we're now down dog park, trails,
and overlook. Does that include the boardwalks coming off the overlook?
Yeah, I think we need the boardwalks, so.
I think so, too, absolutely.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, leaving it there for right now. One, is that, do you have any idea for range-wise what that would do to the cost of this?
The amphitheater, for one that seats a thousand, I did expand that to where it shows a thousand, I mean, realistically, that's a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred fifty thousand dollar piece.
By itself?
By itself.
Oh.
So I, I think you're probably, if you're talking about clearing and grubbing and doing some of these things with the bridges and the pathway, pathways, a half a million would be a, a nice, comfortable estimate, just ballpark, to, to get this thing started.
I'm not going to work, I'm not going to work.
I'm, I'm, I am, I, because if I said it was ten hundred thousand, you'd tell me to start tomorrow, but, but, I mean, there's, there's a lot of contingency, you know, with what we're talking about, and of course, having the layout, and, you know, each one of those bridges, like the bottom left down there, you know, those are thirty to fifty thousand.
Well, the overlook is what we take it out.
The overlook's going to be big, too.
We have to have overlook.
And then you have all your trash cans and your park benches, too, and those are a thousand bucks a piece.
What were you talking about, you have something like this?
I think that's a phase two or three that are in, unless you want it now, then the price goes up.
You could be able to have the groups.
Yeah.
Well, we've got, rent people here, sitting here. What kind of, where would we go, Shane, Emma? What, what groups out there would you, could you apply for money for this?
Well, we've already got C-FRO funds for the theater for now, but that kicks back in in August, that you can come back and ask again.
Well, it'd be, would this be us for that, you think?
Yes.
Does that match him, right?
No.
No. That's the two hundred thousand, that two, two-
That's two, two hundred thousand.
That's a good start. He's got two hundred. He made it. They know, it's our street.
I'm a two now, three.
Give it to me, baby.
You know, there's some BDOT direct trail access funds, and that's what I'm still counting on for this, you can get money to do recreation trail access.
Mm-hmm.
That might just be for your parking, though, but still, that's more than, that might be thirty thousand dollars.
That's thirty thousand.
That potentially could also be your overlook, that's what I'd try to tie the overlook in with your parking.
Oh.
I'm thinking there's some new DCR funds, too, Department of Conservation Recreation. I'm thinking there's some new funds up there for trails as well, so, what about those funds out there?
The overlook's right there out the road, are we stretching it under urban renewal with BDOT funds? Would that qualify? The overlook?
I can ask.
When it's, all the deals and everything, right?
It'd probably go as far as the rideaway, I guess.
Yeah.
It's about where you're going to be.
Yeah, it's worth asking, because you're one of them.
Yeah. Well.
I think if you, when you design it, if you equip bicycles, it opens more dollars to be done, because that's, if you stay around with that, we may be able to get some big O, big O dollars.
On the trails, you mean? Oh, okay.
And as part of that story, you'd argue it's safety of getting your bikes and your people off the road.
Yes, yeah, that's right. So we could, we could possibly get some dollars there for BDOT.
All right, Nathan, from what you've heard here so far, before we go, you got to redo, I guess, are you going to redesign this, or do we need to even worry about redoing?
No, I don't, I don't think there's any need to redraw anything here, essentially, you know, we'll just identify this as phase one and, and start going after the money, I guess. I wouldn't, and, and you can tell me, and Shane can weigh in on this, too, until we had any monies appropriated, I wouldn't want to go any further into design phase, you know, doing design development or construction documents even until we know we're going to do something out there. And so as, as the monies hopefully come in, and we just pick a piece and say, you know, okay, we need to go out there, let's go and mark the property, clear what needs to be cleared, mark the trail, and know where that's going to go, or, you know, let's get the CDs, construction documents on the overlook, that's what that piece is going to go now, whatever it is that comes in and we start, could be able to bite off, we'll just design those as we go, instead of doing a whole big feldswoop production.
So hypothetically, if the council wants to proceed forward and working on this, regardless of what we do, if we decide we want to proceed at whatever level, the first thing they do is clear it. Is that right, Doyle? Do we need to go out and clear that out or not, before we do anything?
I mean, we can, if, if the town's obviously got ability to do that kind of thing, that, that would be nice to show us exactly what is there, and then if the monies do come in and we know that there's a big lynchpin somewhere that we know how to, we've got to figure out a way around it.
Or do like- Mr. Mitchell has access to a group to get it cleared.
Yeah, I'd like to move forward with that, Mayor, during the application process.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just clearing, what, what do you think, even with this being a first phase, what would be, what, what would be the step, which would be first, what would you concentrate on first, the walking trail, the overlook?
I would, I would do the walking trail first, because I, I showed it on here, it's pretty faint, but right, right just north of the back of the government center there, I added in that parking lot where we were talking about, that below. So if nothing else, and people could park either there or at the government center and get access to the trail, they can begin using the trail while everything else is coming along. I really, the overlook is, is a charity on top, in my mind.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it'd be beautiful to have, it'd be a really nice amenity, but with that overlook, you can't just do the overlook, well, I guess you could, you could just do the overlook, but then tying it into the trails with that boardwalk system, I mean, that, that's an expensive piece.
Right.
A boardwalk that is not off the ground, it's just off the ground a little bit, not really, is thirty dollars a foot.
So we, we're basically getting ready for the overlook, with these two fronts.
Yes, sir. So you could do the, to answer your question, you could do the trails, and you could even do the dog park, and get that functioning, and then come back to the overlook, and then if we wanted pavilions or that, those kind of things, we can figure that out and figure where they go.
Even if we, once we get the walking trail in, would that, at that point, would we do benches and, you know, maybe picket tables or something along the walking trail, or?
You could do that, you'd want to have lighting, you know, on it and things like that, so.
And that's where the chances, we talked about people sponsoring it in this community.
Right.
Corporate sponsorships, or personal sponsorships. We'll, we'll talk to you about sponsoring, I think, talk to you a little bit about that. Shane tested memory, I think I remember, our, we have to wait a year from our last time, the next round is, is it in file next year?
For what?
For the crop funding, the two hundred-
C-FRO?
For August, or-
It'll be in August, that'll be the, that'll be your next round.
Okay. How long was your process?
I haven't looked into it.
But this will be at least thirty, ninety days.
Oh, eh, much longer.
Much longer. How do y'all feel about proceeding forward here? Kevin?
I'm getting with it.
The Anna?
Yes.
Allison?
Yeah.
Mary? Doyle? Moving forward for fall park. Hit the money, applications, well, the money's, start the applications and- Clear it off. Getting ready to clear it off. Right.
I'm getting there.
Right. Does that give you all enough direction to move forward?
Absolutely. I think the, the only question I would have then is, when do you want to start clearing? Because right now is a really good time to go cut a bunch of stuff out before it starts growing and getting the snake.
But you're gonna have, you, again, somebody's gonna have to tell us what not to clear and what to clear.
Yeah, I, yes, sir.
Probably a couple, couple ravens on each.
I'm expecting.
I read one in.
Make it very visible. You don't make it green.
Well, we're only going to use them out there, don't worry.
And then, I would just suggest you coordinate that with Mark, and the crew, he's, he'll be, is that, right? Work with Mark on getting it, what you want dialed, and then who's gonna get it dialed.
Okay. Sounds good.
Everybody get it? Everything else on this matter? Public hearing's closed, but while we've got you here. Do you wanna wait, Scott, deal with it, Davis Brothers?
No, I was, I was just gonna ask Nathan, I actually mentioned putting that on downtown revitalization, this is more streets. We got an, a, a quote on, uh, maintenance on our landscape enhancement improvements on the street skate. And my understanding is that B-DOT funds can pay for the, uh, the maintenance of the landscape enhancements that were on the, on the street rightaways. Mark, is that correct?
I think so.
And there's a couple areas, maybe the love sign, uh, anywhere else, Nathan, that wouldn't be covered under?
No, I think the love sign would probably be the only one that's outside the rightaway. Everything else should be in purview.
And if I remember correctly, you, you recommended at least Davis Brothers coming in for this initial maintenance, maybe the first one or two years. While, uh, you know, some of the plants are still young, and doing the maintenance on those and, um, and getting that taken care of. So I don't know if you need a motion, Mayor, but I'll, uh, I'll make that in a motion to go ahead and move forward with, with the maintenance on our landscape enhancements.
Does it include the, uh, sign at the park? Does this?
Which parts?
Going into, if JSC switches pass.
Were you, you talked about a set, where we put?
I don't think that one actually got, got anything done there.
Well, we, we have a sign there, but it's.
Right, right.
That's good.
Yes, sir.
Okay, because that would be.
No, we talked about doing that area, like at the, at the water treatment plant also, but I don't think we ever, we ever got to those improvements.
We just said, let's do, let's get everything done with the B-DOT rightaway, and then the town can look at it.
I think we just won't do something up there, it's, it's very important.
Where do these money coming from?
B-DOT. B-DOT.
Okay.
I'll second.
We got a motion in a second. And, and this will start, when did you say, about March? When, when do they start this kinda work?
March, March would be the best time for them to come and get all that done, and then everything's gonna start budding out in April and looking good again.
Nathan, any of the, any of the plants are having trouble? I mean, was there a warranty on some of those? I mean, would those be replaced, or at their cost, or would that be our cost, which I don't know anything?
There is a one-year warranty, and I think, it's unbelievable how well these plants can do. I think we only had one tree die out of everything that they put in, which is phenomenal.
The boxwood looks real green on.
It does, and I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, Hassel. That boxwood does get a rust color in the wintertime, and, but by summer, it's gonna be just as green as it was before, so. It's kinda like the fall color on it, but, uh, it's the best boxwood to put in that, that kinda situation for salt tolerance and that kinda thing. If they turn real light brown, like, like khaki brown, they're dead. But if they're just that rust color, they're fine.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion in a second on the maintenance proposal from Davis Brothers, any further discussion? All favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Will you make the contact for us to get that?
Let them know, let them know they're ready to go.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you. These are the towns, I'm gonna leave them for you all, we can put them up.
I'm sorry, I got one more question.
Go ahead.
What are we doing, what was the final decision again, and when do we need to address? The, uh, down at the family grove where we started, there?
We got a, a proposal on that, I understand that's downtown revitalization.
Is that right, that comes out, was it B-DOT money?
No, that's downtown revitalization.
Really, okay.
Street skate.
So that will, is this same outfit, we'll be doing that then?
Yes, yes, sir.
So it turns you loose, is it right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They're sourcing the plants and getting ready to go.
Okay.
So, on that same thing, since, cause I, I keep forgetting, I think I've been told, the, this, the sign on the east end of the project. When, when and what am I supposed to be doing now?
Out on the.
Right there, Lebanon Auto.
Oh, there the.
Secondary sign.
Yeah.
I see.
That, that, going out of town, just above, there below the Jesus.
I think we got the post in from Appalachian Iron Works, if I'm not mistaken, and it was just a matter of getting somebody to put it up and get it planted.
So I just need to go ahead and get Keith to do what he did on the other.
And if he does that, if you want the planting around it, then it'd be ideal to get Davis Brothers to knock it out while they're here.
Absolutely. And then get Tony to do the sign.
Sign's ready, I believe.
Oh, Tony do it. All right.
So I just need to get it done.
Yeah.
Would you, you might need to check with Nathan on those.
Location.
Yeah, if you wanna see me, or get an ability, or whatever, to make sure.
It might be moved since you looked at it last.
Since you build. Changed order.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
We're gonna work with you guys, ladies. He's over here out of the way. Okay.
Thanks, Nathan.
Thank you all.
Thank you all again. All right. I'll see if public request list, were you just dismissed and say hello, or?
Yeah, I'm just dismissed and see if y'all had any questions about the hazard mitigation.
All right. Okay, we're now ready to bid on the other theater. So, there we go. And I see Diane, this is Ken's construction. Okay. Ready? Forty-four thousand, seventy-three dollars and forty-five cents. This is Abington Roofing. Thirty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Baker Commercial Services, Baker Commercial Services. It's in here. Thirty-nine thousand. How much? Thirty-nine thousand. E. Well, okay, they're everywhere.
Bristol.
Bristol.
Bristol. On this. So the next step, I, we need to make sure we're comparing ample steps here on these bids, correct? So Mark, there's one. Two. There's the third. So we, we got a span of, from thirty-two to forty-four, lowest to the highest. What's the council's pleasure at this time? Well, everybody speak up at one time, man.
Well, I'd like Mark to review, uh, the bids, and also make sure that the proposal, the bid, the proposals are acceptable by the building inspector.
Yeah. Yeah, and if they meet, the guy, the.
criteria of the bid.
You gotta make sure that everybody's bidding the same thing, right? Okay. What's your timeframe for awarding, when do you want to get them started off, getting the rug fixed? How long you want, just wanna ask you, when we want to award the bid? Do you wanna award it contingent on review? I don't think, and how about this?
I think in the document, you put seven days.
Placement deadline?
Well, no, seven days to review.
Review and award.
Oh, yeah.
So a week from today?
Right.
If it's agreeable with you all, uh, and, I'm gonna give it to you, so right in your pocket, Scott, I don't know what your work schedule is. But, is, if it's agreeable, I'd like for, uh, Mark, and Scott, and Doyle to review these bids before we award them. Will you do that?
Sure.
Doyle? And is everybody willing to meet the week from tonight? Should calendar lay the adjourned recon beam for purposes of this award tonight? Doyle?
Yes, I'm in touch.
You good?
Yeah.
Mary? Well, six. Hassel, you meet next Monday? Deanna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
The name, every line. That we need to adjourn to recon beam.
Next Monday, you talking about what you're going for?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth is hard.
Where we're spending those monies. Does Shane need to be with this group to review this bid, since we're using those green funds?
Stop me, that's good.
Y'all all right with that?
Yeah.
You got time, didn't it?
Yeah. So is that when y'all meet, or?
Okay.
The date seventeenth.
A week from next seventeenth. That shouldn't matter, huh? Yeah, we good.
I can hear you.
You don't need Diane, man, you're off, aren't you?
I am.
You're never off.
Yes, sir.
Good, I'll bet. So. Is that all right, everybody? Okay. All right, moving forward. Heather? How are you?
I'll take it, thank you.
Want to congratulate you on your new job.
Thank you, sir.
As Russell County Tourism Coordinator. I'll let all the council speak, and I'll speak my part first. I do wanna say thank you for what all you did for us during the bicentennial, and helping us get ready for twenty-twenty. And at this point, I'll start with Kevin.
Heather's taking it all ready. I get worker header now, so the coworker and everything, but we do appreciate everything that's for town this year. You don't know how amazing, what kind of job you've really done. People pray on you from town, out of town, and everything, it is amazing what you've done, and we do really appreciate everything you've done for us.
He's already taken off.
I'm sorry.
But I appreciate, I, I too, with these, uh, when we work the, uh, doors and things, getting tickets, people from out of town, they wanted to see Heather. I mean, we appreciate you.
His things, they look all over the place.
They look all over.
Yeah.
Mark?
We did a good job.
We were.
I just wanna tell you, appreciate all you done, and now even know more what you did, because. Diane, Diane's doing it now, I ain't gonna lie to you, but no, I do, and it is, you know, a lot of what you done was behind the scenes, and I don't think people really understand all the work that you did do. Very grateful, very appreciated for all of it. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Heather, I think you did a great job. Uh, I know it was a lot of work and a lot of after-hours work, but it did definitely paid off for us. And I appreciated everything that you did, and kinda opened the door for us to see everything we really needed to do. And I thank you for laying that foundation for us.
Good job, Heather, we, probably hard to write one to do, but you done a wonderful job.
No, probably not.
But you done a good job, appreciate, thank you so much.
I'll just back what they said, Heather, it was, it was a wonderful year for our town. And you deserve a lot of credit for the success that we had last year. Me, myself personally, you know, I worked with you on a couple of the events, and it was really nice working with you, and I enjoyed it, and just wanna say thanks.
Well, I wish I could have a bicentennial.
Every year.
I really enjoyed it, and I, I wanted to stick around for your needs and stuff, but I really appreciate the new opportunity I have, and. I think, uh, people noticed what I did here, and my jobs, and it set the foundation for me to be able to move on and work with Kevin.
I'd like for you to join me down front, Miss Sarah. Diane, can you take a picture?
Oh, no.
Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell, please.
We could all gather around behind me here.
Will you need a beer?
I think we need to place.
We can all get armed.
We're gonna need a good chair.
We're short.
You're a silly chick.
Well, I do want Mr. Mitchell.
Can you not take the picture?
I can take it.
Or Kevin, or Shane. Shane, get up here, Mark.
I want my whole daddy in.
Diane, get up here with you.
No.
Sure?
Yeah, I, I really love working before. Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Your first one said that.
You gotta let me.
What about Tommy?
All right, everybody ready? Expressing the consensus of the mayor and town council, recognize that Heather Powers for your generous commitment of time, support, and inspiration to make our two thousand and nineteen. Bicentennial celebration year such a success. And for your planning and coordination efforts for the town eleven's two thousand and twenty secret fest and event schedule. This evening on February tenth, two thousand and twenty.
Well, thank you so much. I'm trying here for the newspaper business.
All right, everybody ready now? I'm gonna take a couple, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Gina Jackson.
One more.
That makes her part of it.
Thank you so much.
Did you get a gift card?
It's in there. It's like that Prigo stuff. Mark, before we get with you here, let's, we got bicentennial discussion, did anybody look at their? The bicentennial folder or magazine here?
There's mine.
Are there any changes atop the president? There's only, I have one thing I'd like to see. You know, I looked through here, we've got the Cleverly's name on the pictures, and I'm trying to think of our, as we all age and get a little older. Our memory, I'd like to ask you to put the name of the groups in the rest of the program. You've got the Cleverly's name. You've got Cleverly's name, but like, uh... We got Rubus Drew's name. Drew, what would we have them?
Remember the dog? You got Best Lusters, RoboCop. You don't remember?
Oh, is that it? They don't have their name up here, Rubus.
Well, it's on, it's on here.
Okay.
Obviously, I'm just gonna let you say it.
But we don't have time to pick it again, haven't we? I might have skipped that one, I don't remember. Yeah. I thought so, but I was...
They didn't tell you that back then?
He did, I was wondering if you could do more group shots.
I was wondering.
Of the people, like of the people there at the...
I thought it was nice looking, wasn't it?
I thought it was really good. I'm not, I'm not complaining at all, I thought it was wonderful.
He said for us to ask you if there's things we wanted added.
I would like to see all the people that attended, I would like to...
Like aerial, I mean, like aerial pictures from Main Street?
More of the crowd and...
More crowd shots.
Same crowd shots, yeah.
I would like to see our group pictures with each of these groups.
He's doing that.
He's doing that?
So, he's, he's doing a packet, he's printing pictures for every council member with their individual pictures with each member that we had the meeting greet.
Right.
Plus the group picture with the meeting greet.
Okay. Yeah.
And he's putting that together in a packet for all council members.
I would, I, I really like that, I just thought more of like the group shots, more of the crowd, the people that came.
Sure. You don't talk about all the green light? Okay.
That thought was great, I mean, it's fun.
Good job, yeah. All right. All right, Mark.
All right.
It's your turn.
On the one thing on the police report in addition to what you've got is, uh... Your drug task force officer presented approximately thirty indictments today, so... And there's more to come, but I mean, he and Doug, he presented about thirty indictments today, I thought you'd wanna know that.
Keep them healthy. Just keep them healthy.
Yeah, so far. So, so, yeah, I mean, and I was talking to one of the state police coordinators, not our coordinator, but one, one of the other captains of the state police, and he was real impressed with the work that, that the Russell County boys and ours in particular were doing, so they're doing a good job. Get that one in there. Uh, number one, on the comprehensive plan, uh, I guess I'm asking for permission to, to get with Emma, to, to put a, put a big package out for someone to do an update and/or do the comp, comp plan for the town, because the last one I found was 1987.
Never been charged for quite whatever five years?
Every five years to be updated.
Or reviewed.
Yeah, or reviewed, yeah.
This has to be reviewed every five years?
Especially, uh...
We have a five, every five.
You need motion or time?
I do, because it will be in excess of five, well, dollars.
I made a motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to authorize town manager to meet with Emma, is it white? That people incorporated to help advertise for a comprehensive plan review package? Is it proposal?
Right, proposal.
For a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
And to go ahead and advertise, is that part of the motion to?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we'll leave that, yes.
Just a statement, you might reach out to Jim Ball, we do comprehensive plans for the county.
Is it free?
Uh, I don't know about free.
Is it cheap?
It'd be cheaper than a private.
It might be cheaper than hiring somebody.
That's a good, a good one, I would say.
You can hire us, but it'd be cheaper, I think. So, I'll reach out to Jim Ball just to see.
We'll still get his spec, and then I'll contact Jim after we get the spec.
Okay.
All those are part of the motion, say that?
Aye.
They're the same thing. Okay.
Number two, the secret child, holler disposal program, you, uh, I told y'all about that last week, if you looked at it, basically that is what Mr. Prick proposed. He says we're not making a fortune, but it keeps us from losing money, I mean, we wouldn't, I guess, make a dollar too, but not really, I mean, it's just more of a, but it's a service that's needed, uh, these folks don't have a place, develops a partnership with some of those folks when we need them, for example, we needed one of them to help us out after the flood today, and they helped us out. And he's, he's the one that represented the idea, and I would ask you to adopt that program.
Core, like, 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 before he had...
Good question.
We don't want to know.
So, this way, we're like... We, it's, it's a good question, and quite frankly, that may be done at the nose right now without a license or permitting or paying any fees, and it may not...
That's the only place they could put it, up at the shop, huh?
The shop is where we...
I mean, that's the only place they could hook up anything to...
It's the best spot, because it gets...
Is that actually like where we go up to high school?
Yeah, exactly.
So, this, this gives us...
We'll have to use it, yeah, so how, that's my question, let's say hypothetically, that we go into this program for a, a business like, what's, uh...
Mr. Van Caroll.
Caroll, his building. But if we pass this, does he just coordinate that with Chris? And pay the fees and all that?
Right, how's he going, who's gonna keep up, or how do you want to do the purpose? Who dumps?
Well, if you're dumping, and you don't have the permit and all, uh, then it'll be an issue that we go back and then probably be with Mr. Taylor going back to him and saying, hey, you dumped illegally, and we will try to charge you the fees at this point, the permit and all at that time.
Probably be the same people, wouldn't it, most likely?
Certainly about three people.
Three.
You, you may have...
I think Caroll has a long time been looking for a place, if y'all remember, that when he would test us.
Yeah, but they was what dumping in St. Paul, and give them place.
Yeah.
So, so Chris will keep up with it for us, Mark? I mean, he seems like he would systematically be able to dig that in thoroughly.
Well, are we gonna make him dump that there for Chris?
I think Chris wants him to dump at the, at the town shop.
You need a proper distance, is my understanding.
Well, we're legal, for sure, that that's...
Police walk lane, but... Will they use this, Mark, like Caroll, like, do they want to use this, or are they containing what they're dumping?
I think some of them will, I don't, I think they will.
Well, now, how you gonna keep up with the gallons, or are you...
Well, the, the way it works is it's up to so many gallons, most sizes of the truck, so it'll be, it, it's a, one break is at 500 gallons, I think, and the other breaks at 1500 gallons, so you're not charging them per gallon, you're charging them a fee up to 500 gallons, and a fee up to 1500, and that's, that's where I'm not my memory.
Is that major, someone?
1500, and then the next one's 1500 and one, 2500. Right.
Or else we gonna get stuck in that? Or could.
Well, right now, you're getting nothing, and it's...
They coming in?
I think so. I'm not sure.
Are those prices comparable to what other people would charge?
I think...
Because it's seem kinda low to me, but then again, you wanna incentivize, I think, people from putting this stuff in the proper location, but now, we reserve the right to amend this or cancel this policy.
Sure, oh, yeah, sure, yeah. And the rates can be reset, and I think, I mean, I, I trust Mr. Prick, I didn't set any rates, I, I based on his, he knows his cost, so I, I feel real comfortable that he did the short changes, I feel like he did a good job.
Go ahead, ask.
I don't like it.
You do, I, whatever, it's the, that's why it's before y'all, whatever.
You don't like the dumping, or you don't like the price, or you don't like...
I don't, I ain't trying to create or either one, but I don't know when...
Too much liability?
Yeah, well, and for them, I wouldn't... We sticking their neck out when they do that, and then they putting that, they might dump two or three loads and say, well, I dumped a load.
Well, they may be, they may be dumping right now, you don't like it, yeah, they may be dumping the fellas slower already.
Just down their sewer, their personal residential sewers, or system, or what? And then it goes on to us, and then how would they do that?
It's a place after high school, it's a... Big old man hole, they get it. Big man hole, any horn, that sewer thing? Take the lien off one of the big man holes. And you have to do it. A ladder hole. I'd say in pump...
That sounds illegal.
I'd say in pump that truck often.
I'd say we ought to check in on it some before we do...
You have any issue about Kevin or anything legal, legal side of the town?
No, I mean, I don't know if there's any legal issue with...
No liability or anything, or...
I mean, he's, I think he expects it to see if it appears to be residential or not.
So, hypothetically, even, if we pass this, and people don't go by it, then they're in violation of the town ordinance?
Yeah.
Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
So, is this inside the town shop? Would it have to be during our hours, or would it be anytime they would have access to dump on us?
I think that it would be, if, if that's the location, then, then I understand that that's what Chris wants to be, be done during our business hours.
It's across the creek, ain't it?
Yeah, I think so. I'm not sure where the panel did.
Yeah, I think I'd be more comfortable if we had somebody there to supervise, you know, like, when you hear somebody step out, or...
Well, I mean, I think he's supposed to check it before they dump it, and they're what to say. And, but, see, the point is, is that that, the shop's locked down at night anyway, so they couldn't get in there at night.
I'd say it's tight and check it out first.
What, has Chris brought this to you?
Mm-hmm.
So, this is something that he has seen as a need, as a problem? Has he kinda looked over it over the last little, over the last few months, and, and he said, this is something that I see in need for the town?
Right, you know, I don't know how long he's looked at it, when you say, next month, whatever, but he brought it to me. I didn't ask him for it.
Okay.
He brought it to me.
We're meeting next Monday evening. Won't we just ask Chris to come talk to us, then?
That'd be fun.
Yeah.
Will y'all think about that? Table, table till next Monday?
Look, we like to help, but we need to find out how and make sure we gonna get paid for it, they gonna dump it in there, they gonna dump two or three loads.
Well, if it's done out to town shop while they're open, they would know it.
It's not, they, well, they ain't got nothing to check, who's gonna check?
Thing about now, Hesey, you, you might be getting it free, you might be, they might be dumping it, or you don't know about it.
Free too, if we just do that, well, then give one load, and you get five loads.
Well, you'll have 120 miles, she ain't got that. One again.
I'm good with table it till Monday and let Chris come and...
And let, ask somebody how they wanna check it.
And Mark and, Mark.
They ought to have some, when somebody comes out there to check it, or tell them, when they, that, sign it, or get a ticket on it.
It's kinda like when you go down to the, to the station, it, it'll go down to the side wayside of the county, that we get a ticket and all that kinda stuff. Everybody agree with table till Monday?
But, but we're not gonna be able to, I mean, how do you check the gallons on that? I mean, would it...
Well, it's the size of the truck.
I mean, the size of the truck, but I mean, I can't eyeball that.
Well, he, he, he bring in a 2,500 gallon truck in there, that's what he pays for.
It's based on the truck size, then, not how much, because we can't meter it.
You better have a pool.
Can't meter it. I mean, if it's half a load, it needs to be based on the tank size, right?
Half a load, it costs a load if you come there.
It's 2,500, yeah, okay.
Well, it would, it would save us money to wait until he gets the pool anyway.
He would have.
Kinda see if he, if he brings two, up to 1,500, it's $90, that's $180, whereas if it's one truck load, it's...
Cheaper, I think.
Yeah, it's cheap.
Well, if nobody's checking, why he might bring two trucks and say, well, I just put this one down.
Well, that's what we, well, that's questions we need to ask Chris, man.
And I think that's something Mark should go to, the plan, once it gets there.
Yeah.
What's the plan when it hits the shop?
Okay, yeah, well, I'll have it here.
Okay. Everybody good? Kim, you'll table till next Monday? All right? Go ahead, Mark.
Uh, let's see, what was I?
Number three.
Number three, requesting permission to go ahead and advertise for your park director based upon the, uh, the email received from Ms. Stanley.
I want to make that motion.
I didn't understand what you said.
Permission to go ahead and advertise for park director based upon the email.
The job description, the job, the, the, Larry Sins.
And I'll say it, Mr. Mayor.
Was there anything that I have to add to, Heather?
I had a couple of things, Mark, but I'll email them to you, and you could, you guys can look at it, and...
Okay.
There's just a couple of points that maybe we need to put in the job description.
I didn't get it, Mark. What is it now?
When we were in there.
You did it, that, you said it, right?
Well, I've seen it, too, yeah.
All right, so, how...
Talked about you being, huh?
I don't know. I have a question, Mary. So, we advertise, when are we going to, how long are we gonna advertise it, and when is the council's, will anticipate the interviewing in March, or April, or when?
What? Sorry, go ahead, Mary.
I would like to interview, um, in, in March, I think we have to probably keep it open a little while longer, um, I mean, maybe two, two, two weeks. Um, and then interview, um, in March with the hopes that they would start in April, because the, Jim's gonna open that, that'll get them kind of, give them some experience about what's, what we are expecting.
Get ready for?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll probably have to have another meeting in March, probably.
Well, is it po, yeah, is it possible maybe to, that we can review those applications, maybe in a personnel committee before a meeting in March, and then set the interviews up for two weeks later, or...
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I think we have, just to interview, I don't think we have to do it to cancel meeting, not interview.
And this, uh, where it's a department head, I would, might take us a little bit more time to review those elements.
Yeah. And we ought to put it in the Bristol, and where do you want it put, Bristol, Lebanon, where else? Anywhere else? That's a big area. That's a, is that a big enough area, is what I'm asking, the coverage is...
Doing their B C.
Oh, Employment Commission side? All right. So, all right, this is February the 10th. And so, Heather, when do you have to have it?
Friday.
This Friday, and run it?
Um, what's the next week's paper, the 19th?
It is.
You want it to start on the 19th? I want to have it Friday afternoon, because you all are off on Monday.
And how many weeks in the lead of the news?
I mean, two.
At least two.
Oh, yeah. And we're gonna close at when?
What I would ask for is the 28th, whatever y'all wanna do. Or just you open to the 6th, if you're gonna review applications on the night.
Let's, let's give it a, if we're gonna put the Bristol paper, let's give it three weeks, and close it on the 6th. We meet on the 9th, and you could bring the applications, and we could, at that point, couldn't we set a personnel committee to review them?
Potentially review them that night, and then interview.
Adjourn to reconvene to the 16th for interviews?
Probably so.
Does that work? Does that work, everybody? Scott can't tell me that, because it's a long way out.
I think it works.
We don't need him?
I'm on the personnel committee.
You need him, my personnel committee. And same with Bristol, Mark, that's really good.
Okay, same, same, such one.
Yes, just have him in here by the 6th, at four o'clock, on the 6th, of March.
Okay.
All right? Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay, Mark.
Do we vote on it?
I don't think we do.
Something about you wanna do it?
No, we didn't vote.
Well, all those in favor, any other discussion, anybody wanna, all those in favor of the motion to advertise and Parks and Recreation Director say aye. Those say aye. All right, now, Mark, sorry.
Fireworks for July the fourth, Mr. Gillespie came by, their meeting tomorrow night, and Ms. Diana will be at that meeting so she can relay the wishes of the council. Do we want to make the same commitment we did to them last year? Do we wanna cut that back from where we, we added a little bit for the Fourth of July, for the bicentennial, but well received. But so basically what they need, no budget on the Fourth of July fireworks.
Yeah, I don't remember. I think, I like for us to keep... How much did he have, twenty?
I think, maybe it was, can't remember now.
I don't think it's twenty, it was.
I thought it was more like fifteen or twelve.
Yeah.
We did increase it from, what, I, this is all memory going, it's not good, but ten, we increased it from ten, is the way I think it was.
When they budgeted around nineteen thousand dollars for the fifty-year to do the parade and the fourth, and we just added maybe seventy-four thousand dollars?
Now I don't remember. I don't know.
I'm good with the same commitment I lasted.
I think it was a plus for Lebanon and the county, but...
We got the event that night, so...
I mean, I thought we were well, and the citizens love it. I mean, it's a small thing to give back. I'd like to at least keep it where we were. Y'all okay with that?
Yes, Mr. May. Yeah, I like where they shone this time.
Yeah, we may move them up the hill.
I'm driving away and watching.
Discussion with Mr. Gillespie, maybe moving up on the hill a little further though.
He's afraid he can't get up on his equipment if it's lit or something. I tried to get him to go up on the top.
Well, I'm not talking about all the way to the top, just up to that.
Anywhere, anywhere, fine, man.
But I mean, it won't, it won't change most of your...
Hey, don't change by who?
You do a couple of test fireworks for Hazle.
Okay, number five.
Number five is on the more or less accounted for information and then nuisance and derelict properties. The first one's listed, letter's been mailed, and of course, the deck of property's already in Mr. Tiller's hands. Subject to informing you this, then I think the ones that letters have been mailed to, I will get those to Mr. Tiller within the next week or so. For him to pursue those. Based on complaints that I've, that I've got, it says need letters or a call. I won't bet that these others are ones that I need to address as well. And just inform you that I will pursue these others unless y'all have a belief in that. If you want me to add to that or take away from...
We agreed with a notice for one of these, I think.
Yeah, I think that's in the top part, that's where the letters mailed, yeah, I think so.
Are you sending somebody out with the need letters? We've already sent a notice to?
No, a newspaper notice, we're already...
Oh, he's talking about the letters.
I know. Is that what you did after this?
I think that one we sent that was, I think that's Mr. Martin's after what he picked up, so I think it's on the way. That one will be on the way to Mr. Tiller's way. I think that's the one that is, Diana, I may be wrong.
I see you follow the same procedure under the need letters group, start with the cursing calls, and you're giving them notice verbally, and then proceed.
Yeah.
That's my opinion. Is one of them the one we talked about, Mark? My friend?
Yeah, third one then, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Second, yeah, that's a good area.
Mary, I've got a question for closed session legal, for our property.
All right. We'll table it for now then.
All right. The next one is, there's been a discussion about the sidewalk out at, on Regional Park, I mean, excuse me, Technology Park Road. Mr. Mead feels like that might be an undertaking beyond the sculpted amount of personnel that he has. So I think there's been some discussion about just paving over that way. And then I would ask that the council consider if that's more than Robbie's personnel can handle. And I can understand how that it could be, is putting it up would be fundable by Urban Maintenance District.
Do you put it out to bid to paint it, or put it out to bid to put a sidewalk?
Put a sidewalk.
You already, did you talk, was Greg here last week on paving?
He was.
Is he gone? Is he, are we planning on paving Technology Drive?
We are.
Technology Drive, of course, that CGI north, the whole loop behind the government's...
Well, if that's the case, it seems like that's even more reason maybe to...
Pay the signer.
'Cause he'd be a lot of water drains down that hill, and all they'd have to put bricks in there to give it water.
Well, I, I'd like to, I have a question for Mr. Tiller under legal on this matter as well. So can we, can we table it till we talk in legal?
I think, sure, yeah.
I said one, I have one question.
The next, on the fire truck, I spoke with Brad this morning about that truck. He is trying to make arrangements to go and look at it. Wanted me to present to the council, the, probably the bottom price on that truck is sixty-five thousand, and it's a two thousand and six. And they want me to bring it to council's attention, the two thousand and nineteen trucks there that were advertised for about a hundred and nineteen. For the council to be aware.
Yeah, but look at the miles on that one.
How many, how much did it get off of, or about seventy?
About seventy thousand. I got two checks, one for forty thousand, the second was about thirty thousand. Am I right, Diana?
About seventy thousand.
She's lying to you, she's... No, I, they got about seventy thousand dollars.
Equipment and?
Equipment and truck.
Well, then we still have to pay more to it. Why don't we just do it and pay the difference, brother?
What's the difference?
We ain't gonna pay no...
What was the numbers again, Mark, with the...
Sixty-five thousand for the two thousand and six, and the two thousand and nineteen was a hundred and...
A hundred and twenty. There were numerous two thousand and nineteen's in there for that.
Is that equipment and everything on, or just bare truck?
I'd say that's a bare truck.
They already had the equipment and that, and trucks.
But you got some money on insurance from equipment, too?
Yeah, I got two checks. One was forty, maybe thirty, it was thirty plus.
Well, we don't know what it is to outfit, they asked us to outfit the truck.
I said we got enough money to buy it, and they were more.
Yeah, I think, I guess...
Thirty and forty, yeah.
Well, I guess we're gonna spend that kind of money. I'm wondering, does Danny need to look, do we need to make sure that, do we need to look at the truck?
Yes.
Before we buy a vehicle, spend that kind of money? That's my question.
Yes.
What's in that?
Buckingham County about four hours away.
The two thousand and six one.
Correct.
I just like to...
They bought the truck, it's too small, right? And for reasons they traded it in. I'm trying to remember.
They replaced it with, they're, they're trying to replace two trucks with one. A bigger one than that one, and they're trying to, I think they're buying one mid-sized truck to replace it. Other fire departments.
The two thousand and nineteen truck, is it the same size? It's...
The best way to put that, it's the same class, because there's five or six of those two thousand and nineteen trucks out there. So it's the same class truck, so in a way, yes, it's the same size, but are they both five fifty chassis? I guess they are.
Smooth.
Seven thousand on the one we looked at, but the, the other trucks are...
I, I don't know, because like I said, there were numerous, some of them, some of them, they just posted, I don't know.
I don't remember two thousand and eighteen, if they were. But again, I'm just, I'm just asking a question before we...
The first truck, I think they said it cost two hundred and something.
Was that, there's fire truck information on the package?
Be...
Okay, that's why I was asking, I didn't, I didn't know that.
That was, that was added to your...
Okay, that was, that was what I'm sure. Yeah, that's why I didn't, that's why I'm asking, I didn't know that.
Okay. What's that, guys, the values? That's what I didn't look at.
I think somebody should look, I mean, even though it has that kind of mileage, after you see it, it might help with it.
Seven thousand.
What model is it?
Two thousand and six.
I walked it far since two thousand and six.
What's that?
I walked it far since two thousand and six, actually.
I would think that's a lot for a...
I think seven thousand's a lot for...
They wanna look at it, they say the fire department is looking.
They do, well, that's fine, but I still think, I kinda like our being, who has to maintain the trucks, to look at it.
It'd be good to let him look at it.
See if I can coordinate for Danny to go with him.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what she made it do.
Did, we get her bus.
I, I don't know if he got, we, I know we got the tags, I don't know if he got to go up there after I told him to get the tags.
He wouldn't have seen what, huh?
They can take it and go look at it.
No, I, I made him get the tags.
Sixty thousand. The old drive the way.
He just has to go over here around town, but he just has to go over here around town.
He's talking about going to play the mystery or whatever.
Yeah, he'll take a...
Pick council members up for me.
Okay.
I was on time.
I'm gonna struggle and get council members, it's late picking them up.
So we got, all right, the last one is, we were informed today that the ethics church would go up four point eight percent effective July one. Which is probably fairly cheap increase, really, I guess.
We'll get Sanders to get it, so it'll cost us. We'll get Sanders to get it, it'll cost us.
I could remember about too long ago, it went up twenty-five percent. Y'all remember that with, to... Remember, eight to nine?
Yeah. So, you know, do you plan on go up twelve dollars? I think that's what it would be.
Okay.
That's it from the town manager's report.
Kevin Taylor, you want to lay us in clothes?
I can, or I can do part of that here, about the lot.
Sure.
I've been talking with Andrew Hansen about the lot beside the theater, and I expect that that will, that transaction will be done very shortly. He's supposed to be circulating the documents for signature. Given the amount of time that's passed since this first came up, I think it'd probably be a good idea for y'all to reauthorize the town manager to pay for the lot.
Purchase the place.
I know you're voting on it.
He wants to do it again, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I think they'd better go ahead and do it again for seventy-five thousand.
Do I have a motion to that effect? Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both say aye.
And then I have a matter to bring up, and a couple of matters we might bring up in closed session.
Okay. All right, we had our day into the mitigation plan that's, we need to pass. Shane, can you tell us why we need to pass this?
Yes, this is the FEMA hazard mitigation plan that the Comer Plateau does. We have to update that thing every five years. And it's for all of our localities in the Comer Plateau region, that's McCann, Diggs, and Tasewell, Russell, and all the towns in those counties. And this has to be done in order for any funds that would come, that would arise that you would need from natural disasters. Or any kind of mitigation that you might need from, you know, moving folks out of the flood zone, stuff like that. So, and if this is not in place, and you're not, and approved, you're not eligible for any kind of natural disaster funds or anything like that. This was just approved by FEMA today, so y'all are the first lookout.
You'd be the first one.
Y'all are the first lookout, either see the resolution, pass the resolution.
Based on what happened last week, probably good to have this.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
And there's other funds through the, that FEMA funds, like for rescue squads, for fire trucks, stuff like that. So you're not eligible for any of that unless you're...
That is.
Correct.
I'll make the motion where you approve this resol- resolution for the disaster mitigation act.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Both say aye. Okay, is there a different form I need to sign?
No, that's it.
Can I sign this, give it, let Diana?
Yep.
And we're probably gonna keep the copy here, too.
And I've actually got you a...
I'll just sign too, but...
And here's the actual hazard mitigation plan. It's a big document, so if you wanna make copies, you can.
I thought that was a piece of paper instead of a big document.
Thank you, Sharon.
Yes.
You would give that and sign both of us. You take one, we'll keep one.
All right.
I'm gonna give that to you. Okay. Committee reports. Kevin first.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Deanna.
Yes.
That's a good one.
Nope.
Mary Stanley.
You can go ahead.
Oh, Scott.
Yes.
What is it?
Under streets, Mr. Hayes, that's Leroy Hayes, asked me to come and look at his property. We have some storm drainage coming onto his property that comes out of an open, open piping there, or open storm drain. That has an open ditch, and it comes from, comes from Old Fincastle Road, or Fincastle Road. And me and Billy, I wrote, asked Billy Hughes to go with me after Mr. Hayes asked me to come look at it. And I would like, Mark, to meet with him, I'll give you his contact information, Mark, and just see if, you know, what, if there's any way that we can help that citizen with the problem that he has. It seems like a reasonable request, where most of that is coming from roadway, water. So I would just ask Mark to meet with Mr. Hayes.
Okay. Any other?
Yes, on Parks and Rec, I spoke with Deanna earlier. First, the Old Mill, Woody McClanahan pointed out to me that the Old Mill fence, the Old Mill Park is sagging. And we talked about maybe putting some spacers underneath those fence posts, and I think it's continually getting worse. And I'd like Mark to either work with our guys, and if our guys can't do it, maybe work with Keith Steffi and making sure that that gets maintained.
I think Keith has the parts in, and Keith had, just forgot to get them in there.
I remember he talked about that, I think, I thought he'd order them.
Also, I think Little League may be coming next week, but they, they requested, they may come, be coming next month. But they requested to see if we could roll, literally roll, the Little League field with our roller. I think we have a pavement roller, I talked to Billy about it, he said...
You talking about the infield or roll?
No, the outfield, the outfield's where it is.
We do have a roll.
And he said maybe he wouldn't put all the water in it, while we have to dry out a little bit quicker, I mean, a little bit before we use it over there. But that's something to see if we could help some of that outfield, especially there's a, there's a little hump there that transitions from the infield to outfield. that transitions from the infield to outfield. And I know that Justin Adams, somebody could do it like that, but I don't think we should get a tractor on that field. I think it'd be worthwhile to try to attempt to maybe roll it ourselves a couple of times before the season starts.
Yeah, this is outfield only, not the infield.
You can roll it off.
Can we roll it off?
You can roll it off, but it's, but the outfield, the outfield is what the request...
Be a lot dryer.
Yeah, needs to be a lot dryer. It does. It does. But the outfield was the request.
Gotcha.
The uplighting at the monument, I wanted to check with Mark to see if that's something that we could still be done. If the Jim, I think Jim Porter who advised him and make on lighting on the monument. But I don't, just wanted to follow up with that to see if those come in or if we can get those ordered as well. Moving on to finances, I talked to my financial committee. And if you notice the check register that we made a bond payment last month in January. And I wanted to propose that we move it forward, that we create a new account to put our bond payments in from, on our, on our industry projects or the industry bonds mainly with steel fab and also polycaps and put that in a separate account. So that way, when the bond payment comes due, you know, we'll, those funds I think now get deposited directly into the general fund. That way we can keep up with that and be able to pay, you know, keep that out of our general fund to realize that those funds are for industrial bond payments.
Okay.
One other proposal I'd like to make is to close out the credit card for Stephanie Burke. I would suggest paying the card off and just having Mr. Mitchell get two cards. When I mean two cards, I just mean two physical cards for the same account. And that way, you know, we just have one credit card bill, but he can have multiple cards under his name.
What we've done is because we can get them to close it out after numerous discussions, it's closing out the whole account and opening up a credit card account with the First Bank interest. So we're already in the process because after numerous occasions trying to talk to Bank of Virginia about it, they never would take, get rid of that one after, every time they'd say do something, we'd do it. And then we kept about six calls in. I said, forget it. We'll just close that account.
So there's Stephanie's cab lot.
Yeah, well, yeah, our new, our new credit card will be from First Bank.
First Bank. That's good.
That's good.
So that should be done, pretty close to being done now.
One other thing I'd like Shane to maybe briefly talk about, about some of the Southwest funds that are available for water and sewer. I know that we're constantly seeing on our reporting, on our reports of upgrades and, and new equipment that we're purchasing for both the wastewater plant and also the water treatment plant. And I think they meet quarterly, and I think it's important for us to have at least our superintendent or the assistant superintendent at those quarterly meetings. I think last year we had used, didn't we use fifty thousand dollars of those grant funds for a project chain?
Yeah, it looks like, I got some information that the town was, they, y'all received fifty thousand dollars for, in the last round of funding for the water and sewer assessment. So, but those funds are available. It's called the Southwest Water slash Wastewater Fund. And those funds come from basically from DHCD to our office. And those are six hundred thousand dollars usually is the amount that we get. And we try to divide those with all our localities. And it's, so you're not going to be able to come in for a six hundred thousand dollar amount because we give it to all of our localities. So it's more of a gap funding for a large project or it's funding for a smaller project. So if those funds are available for any, you know, water construction or, you know, anything dealing with your water or your wastewater or sewer, anything that you're doing in the town, those funds can go towards that, you know. And I'd already mentioned to Jim the possibility of the theater may be, you know, upgrade of all their water lines and their sewer lines. And that would be, that would be an excellent project to pay for that. But if you've got other projects as well, that comes in yearly. And this year, those funds, they tend to come available June or July. So think about the projects that you've got coming and think about June and July of maybe, and we'll let you know when those are released. And that's why we have that quarterly meeting that usually coincides with that release. And we, we let the localities know, get projects in so we can get them right, so we can decide who gets funds.
Is that an application process for that?
It's just, it's really a simple application process. It's, you know, tell us your project description, tell us your cost, and, and it can be, and also it could be, like, like you can't go back for next year or from last year and say, we did this, we want to apply for this money for that. But if you apply for, say, say you apply for something to be replaced right now, a water line or sewer line in this phase in June or July, and you all go ahead and do it, you can be reimbursed for that.
So it's okay to apply acutely for stuff as well, as long as we get an application?
As long as it's in that same year that you apply, then you can reimburse yourself if you go ahead. If like if it's an emergency, you got to get it done, or then, then you can go ahead and pay for it yourself. And then if it's funded, they'll, they'll reimburse you as well.
Is that what it's signed for?
Yeah.
For the mapping, right?
Mapping was the...
The assessment? Yes.
So it's, it's anywhere.
Yeah, it's fifty thousand dollars. That's yours. It's already been approved. It's there. So you all, that's your own money.
Okay.
And Debbie handles that at our office, Debbie Milton.
Okay.
So she does, she, she grants all that money out. And it basically comes to the staff to decide who gets what money. It goes to our board of directors there. And usually our board of directors, I mean, we got all four counties. So you can imagine, when there's money available, they're, they're like grabbing and wanting. So everybody wants their part. So, but we try to be fair. We try to be, you know, if it's a much needed project, then some of them outweigh the others. So, you know, everybody does get funded, but a lot of times if you replace it, you get a little bit of it.
So we've been, we've been approved fifty on the mapping?
Correct. That was the last funding.
Okay.
It seems like, I mean, it seems like there's always been a, I mean, when you look at the information and the reports from, from our wastewater and water treatment plant, there's always been upgrades or equipment and stuff. And it just seems like, you know, it'd be good to have somebody at that table quarterly. Even if it's Mark maybe. And, and, you know, we might have a bigger project that might be able to get funded, you know, partially funded if we're, if we're funding it. So, but it's gonna get worse.
Yeah. I mean, your, your plants are aging.
Gotcha.
And, and so what you're saying, it's good to have somebody there just as our representative and then to get an idea about...
Yes, I mean, those meetings, they, they detail what funding's available. Plus we get, everybody else has to, it's called the, the Water Roundtable Meeting is what they call it.
So they're quarterly?
Yes. And, and basically we have people from DEQ there. We have, you know, DCR there. We have Rural Development there. We have everybody that funds sitting at the table. Health departments there.
I think I attended the last one.
Yeah, I think, I think you might have. Chris had been coming, and I think you came to the last one. But it's a big, I mean, it's, it's a pretty full conference room.
Is it?
Because it's, it's, it's just good information to have. Plus, like I say, we bring other people to the table that can also give funds as well. So it shows you what's available.
And they can have a discussion unless Chris is there or, you know, or Mark's there. Then you would know what money would be available and that might fit a project that we have to do.
Correct. And then, and again, any, the Southwest funds, they'll go to any water or sewer project that you need to do, even, even a minor one. If you need five, six thousand dollars, you can get five, six thousand dollars. I mean, they've given up to two hundred. So...
Okay.
So there, there is ways, if it's, if it's a much needed project and, and all that, then...
Do you get a camera for when those meetings are?
Uh, I give...
I scheduled.
I'll give one to Debbie. Debbie knows all that.
Can she get, maybe just, if you don't care, send it to Diane?
Okay. I think they, she sends out a notice too, so. But yeah, we'll make sure, we'll make sure Levin's on it for sure. And I'll try to get that updated when the next one is anyway.
Okay. All right.
That's all I got here.
Thank you, Scott. We need a motion to go into closed session.
Do you want to do a ticket sale?
Yes. I'm sorry, before we do the ticket sales.
Ticket sales for the night of comedy are only at thirty-eight. I don't know where it is here at the town.
Twenty-seven.
But for the four o'clock show, for the cleveries, it's at one fifty-four. And for the seven o'clock show, it's at one thirty-two.
Oh, that's only event, right?
It's on Eventbrite.
And you can add about fifty or sixty to each show. They're like down from here. So we're up at two hundred for each show on Saturday.
Friday night, what's it about?
Well, people around here, they gotta get used to going to a comedy show.
Yeah. And this is the first time...
First time we've done.
That we've ever done anything like this, so.
Need a motion to go into closed session.
Can I get some insight? When we do Farm the Table, it's like the last two days, two, three days, that's when people want tickets. The weather looks great. We want to come. So...
They'll go up.
Mm-hmm. I would just keep hanging on and just, that's just how it is. Like a hundred and one tickets. They wait till last minute too. So...
Thank you. Need a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of personnel and legal.
Two point two nine three seven one one eight for one and seven. I'll second that motion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both saying aye. We will be taking ten fifteen minutes.